Twenty twenty-three, please rise if you're able and join us for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Now, the clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivell.
Present.
Just one time before the end of the year, we have to all say this.
Well, I figured we had another three to go, right? Or two to go?
One, I think. All right. So we're going to start out this morning with a discussion about Liberty Gardens FEIS, where joined by Janice Shearer, our town planning and development administrator, also Ralph Basano, Charles Russo, John Schneider, all representing concern for independent living. I don't see John. He's on the list, but we have Chick and others.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so Janice, you want to kick this off?
Sure, good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us today. And I'm here because you see this giant document here in front of me. This is the final environmental impact statement for Liberty Gardens. And you're to be commended for working all the way up until the end of your term. We're trying to, you know, work out how these projects get closed out, how they get introduced to a new board if they're continuing. So we just felt it was a good idea to just sort of hear from the applicant themselves about the project amendments and the responses to comments in this book. It will be either it's here, they've given it to us. They gave us a draft previous and a lot of people foiled it. We have a whole bunch of comments. We said, go back and fix the draft based on the comments. You know, there was a lot of comments sent to the clerk's office. There was comments, there was ads in the paper. There was a lot of ways that people were trying to communicate because the public hearing was already closed. But they wanted to say, this isn't complete because they didn't look at these things. So we said, you should look at those things. And now they said they have, they've given us back this book. And I thought, you know, rather than me speak for them, it's just easier to have them speak to you and whoever's continuing on the board. As this is going to go forward, we can't just say, you know, the session is ending and, you know, too bad. But, you know, we can continue to review it.
Could you explain the secret process or just real briefly?
Absolutely.
So this is, they were asked to do an environmental impact study.
So the original proposal.
They did a draft, there was a scoping session. They did a response to that. They were told to answer more things and now they're responding to that.
Well, let me just tell you formally. So the secret of the way it works is that you, you said this is going to have at least one significant environmental impact. The big ticket items here were traffic, the use itself, and the sewage treatment. Right, so those were the big items that everyone was most concerned about. It rose to the level of significant environmental impact. Positive declaration happened. The scoping is like what data and information do you find relevant for them to analyze? And they did that. Draft environmental impact statement was the analysis of all the impacts and mitigation if necessary. Then we had public hearings, which you may recall. And we created this in my office, just quickly, just hard to show to you. You can hand it out. But these are all the hearings and the times and links that we think we'll hand out to the new board so everyone can review those meetings, you know, if you don't mind passing through.
So Janice.
Anyway, so let me just quickly, so those are all the hearings that took place and all the comments that were collected. The final environmental impact statement responds to everything everybody said. So that was, that's this. This document, most of it is actually the DEIS and the transcript from the hearing. But the rest of it is all like the responses to comments. The, the board now, that your board or the future board has to say whether or not this is complete. And what by complete, it means they've answered all the comments to your satisfaction.
Right, so I just want to distinguish that. So it's basically the decision that's going to be in front of the board is whether they've answered the questions sufficiently for us to make a determination.
That's right.
Right? So once we say that, if we say, no, there are still unanswered questions, we can't, we're not able to make a decision yet? Or we say, you've sufficiently answered the questions, whether we like the answers or not, we don't, we can then make a decision as to whether it's complete and then make a decision on the project.
That's right. So then the, it's the, the step after saying it's complete is the findings. And, and you have to wait 10 days between, 10 or more days between the finding it to be complete and the consideration of findings. So the, this should inform findings. You know, of course, legislation is debatable. The best legislation is debatable. There's, there's pros and cons to everything you look at. So, but you would have to be able to say they've sufficiently mitigated all the impacts and that this project should move forward in the findings? Or there's a findings that says, you know, we can't get there. So, so that's what gets weighed out based on all this documentation.
Deeming the FEIS complete isn't approving the project. It's just simply saying that you can now do a finding statement. And that finding statement isn't approving the project either, right?
That's right.
Ultimately, it's a zoning change that would approve the project, right?
Right. Although, you know, typically it makes sense to have findings in the affirmative if you are inclined to approve it or the other, or the reverse.
Thinking of another project that had a positive finding statement that still was not approved. The discovery, you know, the PDD.
Yes, that happened. Was not ideal, obviously you may recall we were sued. But, you know, that does happen. It's happened before, it could happen again. Your, your findings should say, you know, one, one way or the other, right? Like it's, you're not doing a dissent, a dissenting opinion here. So that's Supreme Court. So you're going to say it's, it's affirmative that we see that, you know, you or the future board is going to find in each category that it, it meets the level of, you know, there's no impact here or the impacts are sufficiently mitigated and the project can be approved.
Well, I think you also can have a different secret decision than a zoning decision because secret is sort of a state law that you have to meet that test. But then ultimately you're making a zoning decision and you're, there are other things that can be considered, be satisfied. But I just, in terms of timing here, we do have a new board coming in.
Right.
Right, so even if, even if this board were to deem the document complete, it's still going into next year.
Oh, absolutely.
But it, does it start, does it start a clock? Does it start a timeline?
No.
No.
There's no 30-day between accepting the FEIS and adopting your findings?
It's a 10-day minimum wait period.
But there's no 30-day.
You can't make a decision before 10 days.
Yeah, but I was under the impression that it started a 30-day clock to where you had to adopt your findings within 30 days.
Is there a clock there?
What I read is that there was, I have to go back and look at the rec, but I think there was something that said there was a 30-day between the adoption or the notice of completion on the FEIS and the board to make a decision.
That's news to me because, I mean, some of these things have languished.
Did you say, you just said you think that that's.
Yeah, I'll go back and check.
No, I think that's a planning board requirement. That is not a town board requirement.
Of course, it's always still a discretionary action.
We didn't have that restriction on the bill.
Process is one thing. Discretion on the actual action is separate from the process.
Yeah, and the guidelines in secret are not hard to pass. They're guidelines.
I mean, you're a lawyer. I think for planning board it does.
I'm going to check it.
Yeah.
But if there is a, yeah, we have to check. But I'm not aware of that. In all the zone changes I've been involved in, you know, some of these things have gone on.
But in terms of, I mean, if the document's complete, the document's complete. If, if the board says it's not complete, it has to say why it's not complete. These are the unanswered questions or these are the questions that weren't answered to our satisfaction.
That's right. And so if you're trying to say it's not complete.
You can't just simply stall the project by saying, okay, we're not going to deem it complete because we don't want to deem it complete. You, if it's complete, it's complete.
Right, so it, it, you know, it answers questions. Does it answer it to the way that everyone will be satisfied? You know, you've already seen some letters and stuff where people will not, they don't want the project to go forward, so no answer will be satisfactory other than the answer of this isn't good.
But it's supposed to be objective, so it's.
You know, it, it, it's a balancing act always. I think that they've answered the questions. It's really up to you all to say that you're satisfied. And that's your resolution, that you're, it's complete. You've, it's your document. It's actually the town board, the lead agency's document. They, you know, the way that it works is you are to, you could write it or you could cause it to be prepared. So the way we've always operated here is that they, you know, you cause it to be prepared. It's not at the taxpayer's expense to prepare these things. They prepare them. You decide whether or not you like it, you require changes if you want them, that type of thing.
Could you respond to the request for supplemental? Because that doesn't make sense to me. Like, we're still in the process.
You're still here. There's no, supplemental would be later.
Right.
To supplement something that wasn't here now.
So if you wanted more information, you ask for it now as part of this process, right?
Well, the question is what needs to be supplemented? And if it's not in this record, then this record should be closed and the new, you know, like what's happening here.
If it's incomplete, then ask for it now.
Yes.
Exactly.
If it's incomplete, then ask for it now. If there's something missing, we need it now.
Can you talk about, the project changed a little bit, right? It dropped 10 units?
Yes, and I think that's a good idea for Mr. Russo.
So, and I, you know, so the, I mean, the big issues, as you said, well, obviously with density, like the number of issues, number of units, the traffic, how the traffic was being handled, and, and then how sanitation, sewers, how, how waste was going to be processed and what might be the impact on the nearby water supply wells and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Have all those things been answered?
I believe so, but I think that's why we invited them to come so that they could answer that to you right now.
Yes, I have to, I'm not an expert on the environmental stuff, although I'm more of an expert now after that. And, but we have really attempted to answer every question, every comment and every hearing. We have spent hours and hours addressing each issue in the best way we know how. And, and I think we've done a really good job in terms of the STP. We have just recently reached an agreement with the nursing home. We have a letter from the Suffolk County Water Authority and Suffolk County Health saying they are comfortable with this approach. It was their recommendation from the start to, to seek this out. And so we, we really have worked hard on addressing every single question. And I think we have, and if there's more questions about what we, what we haven't addressed. And, and the big piece, a big piece was going from 60 to 50, which was a struggle for us. We had to go back to all our funding sources and say, we need you to give us the same amount of money, but we're going to do 10 less units. They've all agreed to do that. We've raised, we've raised a considerable amount of money. And it's five years into it. And I would plead with this board to make a decision and not turn it over because we are the longest-standing 9% tax credit award that the New York State has out there. It's five years now. They usually take them back after two. And so kicking it forward risks, risks the project. We also have $2 million and that's, that's not the main thing. And we, you know, we're a mission-based organization. But we're, we are an offer profit and we've put $2 million, a lot of it, to prepare these documents and hold on to the site for over four years now. So, so we would really plead with you to, to make a decision on this or tell us what's, what's missing in it and we'll address it.
Well, that's part of my problem is that what I have to do now to go back and compare your answers to the document that I have in hand that I've looked at and how much time that's going to take. That's a concern because, you know, it, it took me a while to get through the original.
This is really immediate matter. All this is supplemental stuff. So this is actually what you'll be reading and what we've read.
And I have to make those comparisons. It's not undoable.
It looks intimidating.
It, it's not a decision that could be made without reading those changes in your response.
And I just want to say, Councilman Bouvier, when we first met with you, you inspired us to build the most efficient buildings, the climate-friendly buildings that we could. We focused on that a lot with this. This is, this is all-electric, there's solar panels, insulation. It's, it's almost passive house. We didn't quite reach that, but it's, it's a very efficient environmentally friendly building.
Just to tag along to that, you, you mentioned supervisor, the, the issues that were at hand. We've, you know, we, we started this process in, in 2017 when we were first, our first meetings here. And everything that you've asked us to do, we've done, okay? Density, we went from 60 to 50 at a cost. Traffic, at the recommendation of the county, they, they suggested that we go back into the, the neighborhood behind us. And we were told that that is, we can't, it's not going to happen. So we, we entered into a cross easement agreement with the church. So we're closing, in that easement, we, we now close the, their ingress and egress. And now there will just be one, okay? And, and we accomplished that at a cost. We had to, we had to.
No luck in getting a road that would get to North, not Maine, North Sea Road? Like, you know, through the rehab center.
County, county didn't like that approach.
No, the county, the county didn't want that. County, the county, you know, liked the plan that, that was suggested. We put it together. We, you know, we papered that deal with, with the church and that, that was done. So we took care of the, the, that density issue. We took care of the traffic issue. And then the STP, we took care of with this agreement. Chris Kent is representing the health center. We were working on completing that and, and, and having that done. And as Ralph has just mentioned, that the county is on board with that concept and also recommended the concept. So we followed the recommendations with, with the councilmen, with the environmental issues. We followed everything and did everything we possibly could. And that's the product. That's the, the end of it. And planning has been extremely cooperative with us and worked with us. Listen to every, every, every hearing is listed. Every, everybody got an opportunity to be heard on this and we responded accordingly. We responded accordingly. And that, there it is.
So maybe you want to hear the details of the sanitary system situation?
Maybe you would have them talk about it since.
Would you like me to talk?
Tom Limbo is here for their.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tom Limbo from Nelson and Pope Engineers. How are you? So just briefly, and I'll try to keep it as short as possible. We originally had proposed a, an onsite appendix A sewage treatment plant on the site. And we pivoted away from that because there was available capacity at the Hampton Center Sewage Treatment Plant that's unused at this point. We prepared a study in September of 2022 of that sewage treatment plant, which was to the county's standards as it relates to influent loading and their influent flow. So there's two components to treatment, just. And we were able to demonstrate that there's available capacity there for the connection of the Liberty Gardens to Hampton Center, okay? Related to Suffolk County Water Authority, one of their biggest concerns with the onsite facility was that it had an increased impact on their west prospect well. But given that the capacity was available in the sewage treatment plant at Hampton's, we were able to demonstrate to them that they've already studied that sewage treatment plant, that fluent. And they had made recommendations at that point in time. I happen to be the engineer on the construction side for that job. And we relocated that leaching field as far to the east as possible, excuse me. And that is going to remain as is. The only general maintenance items that need to be taken care of at the sewage treatment plant are just housekeeping issues, paint jobs, sweeping, that, that normal operational issues that occur.
And there's a pump station on this site, though, right?
Yes.
We've had issues in the past where the county doesn't like sanitary lines crossing property lines without a sewer district.
Great question. I'm sorry, I omitted that. Then we will have to go to Suffolk County Sewer Agency for, and the two facilities will enter what's called a private service agreement between the two entities. And then the agency will approve that overall connection agreement. And it will then be offered to the county for dedication, but it's typically never taken because the county is already stressed with regards to the amount of operations that they do on their existing facilities. And as long as the, the plant is within its permit, which it is right now, typically they don't take over facilities.
And the rehab center is okay with going through that process or?
Yeah, we're, we're, back into, back in September was when we had first started that discussion. Chris Kent and I yesterday had a long discussion about sewer agency and making that application as soon as possible. Obviously, they just went through reorganization. Well, they're going to go through reorganization as well. So we won't be on a hearing until that best case February for sewer agency. But depending on when the secret would happen, it's two times at the sewer agency, once for conceptual certification and then a second time for formal approval.
And we have, do you have any document yet from the rehab center say, you know, at least saying, giving you the option to connect in or something?
We sent the draft LOI that has been changed. They asked for more money, we changed it. That's, that is supposed to be signed today or tomorrow.
Okay, so you could provide us with that.
Yeah, we'll provide that. I spoke with Chris last night and he thinks we'll have it today or tomorrow.
Okay. And how confident are you that the county is going to approve the, the agreement with the wastewater?
I've never had one. I've been practicing for 25 years. I've never had an agency agreement that was not approved at the end of the day.
There has, there's room, it has been studied.
There's room, there's, has been studied. There's a letter that Janice may or may not have had the time to read yesterday. The, the health department issued specifically speaking to the, you know, what they would like us to do, part one. But part two, that they have reviewed the capacity study and that capacity study is acceptable with minor corrections related to some of the information that's in the appendices.
Okay.
And maybe just to supplement that, the key, this is a letter dated yesterday. Based on what Tom said, the current method for sewage disposal, the health department indicates this method of sewage disposal and water supply facilities is technically acceptable pursuant to Article 6 of the sanitary code based on a preliminary review. And they have been constantly informed about this. Tom submitted the engineering report. And they just have a few things that are just their technical review procedure. The other item is the water authority also provides a letter. And I'll leave that for Janice. I think you received one or both of these directly. But the water authority had the initial concern about their well field. Again, based on the current project and the way Tom described it, the water authority says, based on this information and the understanding that the operation of the existing STP will remain within stipulated discharge requirements, which it will, the water authority does not have any further objections to the project. So those are part of the record. And then Tom, you should talk about the additional flow going for the plant because that's actually referenced in the county's letter.
Sure. So.
Thanks, that was my next question.
So the additional flow to the, currently the facility is permitted for 45,000 gallons a day, okay? It's seeing approximately 17,000 gallons a day due to the Hampton Center flow rates. Hampton Center at the time of the study in 2022 was a little bit low because of COVID issues still and was at about 65% occupancy. So we took their, that flow rate and prorated it up to their total usage, which got them to about 24,000 gallons a day. When we wrote that report, it was on the basis of 60 units added, which was approximately 13,500 additional gallons, which is well below the 30, well, 24 plus the 13. You know, you're at 37,500 gallons a day for a facility that's at 45 permitted flow. Part two, now that we've dropped down 10 units, you're going to lose 2,200 gallons a day of flow to that. So it leaves additional room in that sewage treatment plant.
Does, does that make the plant more efficient? Because I've, I've heard that.
It's a great question. That's a great question. Right now, the plant is somewhat challenged because there's not enough food coming into the facility to feed the microorganisms that are currently there and trying to treat the process. So when you get a facility that's more towards at least half of its design flow or 22,500 gallons a day, that means you can operate one half of the system a lot more efficiently.
Any other questions on the sanitary issues? I just would like to see the agreement when it comes in to tell that there's, that's a definite way of processing the waste. So it's, so it's 50 units? 50, it's 25 supportive care, 25 portable, what, is it 80% or 100?
60%.
60% AMI.
60% pay.
60% AMI.
What does that translate to? Do you know off the top of your head?
Between 50 and 60,000.
No. So the income of family of two?
It ranges depending on the family size. I don't have the exact numbers, but it can go, it can go as high as in the 70s if there's a couple of kids.
Mostly one and two bedroom or?
Correct, mostly one bedroom.
Is there a pilot attached to this?
There would be a pilot.
There would be a payment on the attached, okay. For the school, right, district? And in terms of, you know, some people wonder about like local workers. In terms of your marketing, will it be done to try to get some, some of the workforce locally into the?
So we have, you know, we've presented on this the statistics with other affordable housing projects, both here in South Hampton and in Suffolk County. And the majority of people come from the local area. Almost everybody comes from Suffolk County, but, but the majority of people come from the local area. And even people who are not coming in become workers. The nursing home right next door is short on workers. You know, it's a natural fit for, you know, people to be living in our housing.
Maybe I didn't phrase my question right, but that's sort of what I'm saying, that they would work locally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whether they're from the area, I mean, everybody's looking for employees.
Right.
Yeah, they become local the minute they move in.
Exactly. And, and, and the question is, why would somebody want to move here and then work far away from here? Wouldn't make sense for them.
Yeah.
We, we put all the comparisons to the other projects in our report, both on traffic and did comparisons on traffic and we did comparisons on, on, you know, how we market, what we do and what percentages we get. So we, we've, all of those were comments that came from the public and we've addressed them. So we've addressed them a number of times and, you know.
Did you guys, did you address the issue? The group for the East End brought up an issue about the remainder of the property. Because it's, the church is like a 10-acre site or 9A, I can't remember exactly. And you guys are proposing to split it into.
Correct.
Like five acres in the back and maybe four in the front. The four in the front is a church. I don't think there's any other plans to make it other than a church. It's, but it's owned part 20. So like potentially could be a few houses, maybe four, I don't know, more, maybe eight houses or something like that, possibly?
I mean, honestly, I think this plan makes it less likely that anything will happen with the church because this brings in funding for the church. They have expressed that they, they want to remain there. And, you know, I think a plan like this makes it less likely that.
Well, it just seems to me like if they stop being a church and they default into zoning, it would, the, let's say it's eight houses. The church is probably more cars than the eight houses would generate. So it would be a, a less intense use.
Have they indicated that they were going to change from a church to anything?
In fact, they indicated that they want to remain the same.
They're going to remain a church.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it probably should be its own highway business. It's surrounded by highway business, but it's own residential right now.
Have you discussed with the nursing home what the shortfall is in their staff? I mean, you know, it's a, it's a huge opportunity there to, for them, obviously, and for people that need to live, live as local as you can get to where you.
We have, we have, and I think it's one of, one of the pitches that we made to them to make this deal in addition to a significant amount of funding. You know, we thought it, it was a synergistic kind of thing with us being there. And even, you know, some of our people who age might need some services.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of the percentage of, of the, that site used, who's employed at the nursing home.
I see.
Do you have any sense of that or?
I, I don't, I really don't know exactly. You know, a lot of it depends on the people coming in. And we're talking about workforce and, you know, we mentioned supportive. The two blend together. The, the veterans that we house in other places, a lot of them work in the community. And we think it's a great opportunity for them to be able to work at the nursing home or other businesses in South Hampton.
Our, our Department of Housing and Community Services, we have lists of people who need housing. We collect lists. We have these ongoing lottery systems, you know. And would that list from Southampton Town be eligible to?
So that's a really good question. And, and in terms, that answers your question, 2J, in terms of the marketing. The people who are on that should make sure that everybody on that list gets information about how to apply for this housing.
We also have a section for veterans. We, you know, we can identify, we can, you know, kind of cut lists for veterans who have come to the town and need housing. So they would be able to apply to.
Absolutely. And I would anticipate that we've experienced this with other, like the Suffolk County. Absolutely. And I would anticipate that we've experienced this with other, like the Suffolk County, CDC runs, runs housing programs and everything. And when they send it out to their people who are on lists, we get a lot of applications from them for our housing.
And our waiting list is fairly large and long. So that's, that's a really good suggestion. I would suggest that.
Okay.
And so the target audience, you said sixty percent AMI?
Yes.
So an AMI, let's say family of four is like a hundred forty?
So there's not really a big enough apartments for a family of four.
So, okay, so with these smaller, so what, so with a family of three?
With a family of three, we can.
And what's AMI for family three? How much do you think?
Cindy, do you know that?
It's like a hundred thirty?
Seventy something thousand would be.
Well, seventy thousand would be the sixty percent, right?
It actually says in here, it would range from a low of forty-one, two forty to eighty-seven, one eighty.
In terms of income?
Yes.
To be eligible, so.
To be eligible.
So basically up to like, almost like a ninety thousand dollar income, something eighty.
That's the highest. And that's with a larger family size. That's why the, the range is because of the family size.
And it has to be of that, it can't be higher than eighty or sixty? It has, that was one of the comments.
With the funding, it's really sixty is the max.
Sixty percent.
There is something.
A lot of people who, you know, families who only, you know, make less than ninety thousand or eighty thousand dollars. There's plenty of people in that, they're completely priced out of the housing market.
So a single person would make fifty thousand nine hundred, it says.
AMI is the average. So by definition, half are making below those numbers.
Yeah. But you're going, but then you're going to sixty percent of that, so.
Right.
No, 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 it's sixty, the AMI is a hundred seven thousand. Yeah, so they, that, we're not going to sixty percent of that number.
No, no, you're going to sixty, sixty percent of AMI.
I was making a point about AMI and Janice.
Right. You know, I've, I've said all along, like, we can't, we can't solve all of the housing problems in Southampton. It's just a small piece. And, and any housing plan has to address all of the AMI levels, you know, in different areas.
Yeah. So let's talk about traffic for a moment.
Okay.
So are we, are you proposing right only, right in all?
It's, that is, that's what the county suggested.
Right in, right out? So let's say you're making that right out, I guess then you go to the left. Let's say you want to go west. What are your options? You make a left that, there's a green arrow, you can make a left. You have to go all the way up to Sandy Hollow and then come down to the lights. A bit of a trip while you end up making a right.
There's a turning lane, so you'd have to figure out where to turn in.
Yeah. Can you, is there a U-turn allowed? Can you, at that green arrow, can you?
If you want to die.
No, that's not a good idea. Both these roads are.
The arrows, you can typically, this.
There's not enough room for you to make a turn.
You have a, you have a left turn green arrow, can you?
There's not enough room. There's a, there's a, there's a bump out for the right turn off of North Sea Road. There's pedestrian crossing there with, there's no way you're making.
I mean, you could turn into the gas station, I guess.
Right now, we're eliminating the church who has a right turn, left turn. They're not, they're not precluded from the left turn.
I mean, if you look, I mean Burger King has no left turns allowed and people do it every day, all day long.
Correct.
So that's interesting. So the church right now, which I imagine will be busy on Sundays.
It's not.
But they, right now, they can make a left.
Correct.
And a left out. So that's got to be eliminated.
That, that's being closed altogether and accessing and ingressing and egressing for our property.
Okay.
So is this being done in conjunction, you know, maybe I'm going a little far afield here, but with the, the Highway thirty-nine sidewalk project that's been delayed for a couple of years. It seems to me that there's a potential solution for, for any, for the problems that you're talking about in conjunction with them. Have you had any conversations with the county in that regard?
Talking about the Highway thirty-nine sidewalk project?
No control over that.
Right, right. I'm not aware of what the current status is of that project.
Yeah, I mean, they say it's a sidewalk replacement, but that obviously involves egress.
Well, that's sort of, I think.
I don't know what, what they're considering.
They are doing a County Road thirty-nine study, even quarter study.
So input might be useful at some point.
Okay.
Or conversation with them to see what it is they're actually talking about versus what we think.
The county GPW does have our traffic impact studies and our next step would be to go for them, to them for full access. I do want to indicate that we analyzed a full movement intersection for the new project. And one of the things that your consultant, Don Engineering, asked us to do was a gap analysis to look at the breaks in traffic for a potential left turn. So unless there's some other restriction, and I really think this should be up to the county, we did look at this that would allow a left turn out when the gaps are there. I actually think that helps with circulation because it just allows more choices for the motorists.
Down the road, yeah.
We did a full traffic impact study. We looked at all the local intersections. We analyzed existing and future build and no build level of service. And the level of service based on the project doesn't change. We all know there's a lot of traffic there. I drove through it last night. But this does not decrease the level of service based on this project. It's just that there is a high volume of traffic. Don Engineering asked us to look at the accident history. There were no records in the accident analysis that showed that this would cause any further impacts. I think Charlie's point about the existing curb cut being a single curb cut and that remaining, both uses using that curb cut is a very important point. And we will, as I said, comply with anything that the county does require.
Can I ask, since you're locating the entry point further east?
Yes.
Is there a possibility for cars, for eastbound traffic to get out of the lane and get into like the shoulder before they turn in so they're not slowing traffic? Is that, have you looked at that?
I think that was one of the comments and we did look at that. I don't recall if we were able to provide that turn lane, but obviously, you know, the driveway would meet all specifications for radii and cars would be able to move in and out of that driveway just as they do now for this combination of the two uses.
So I think this is an.
See if we have any info on that.
An important thing to look at when you're looking at is the comparisons that we did to our other projects and the impact on those projects in terms of, of traffic flow.
And you've taken into consideration, you've taken into consideration the liquor store, the beverage store that's right there? And we would be, so to be clear, we're going to eliminate the, presumably eliminate the entrance to the church and then make that one entrance for the church and this initiative.
Yes.
And that's going to be closer to the beverage store.
There is a cross easement in place, agreement in place, so that they'll come through the property and out at one, there'll be one curb cut now.
With the liquor store?
No.
No.
Just the church, right, with the church and, but it's going to be closer to where the beverage slash liquor store is.
Pretty busy liquor store and then it's like a beer distributor back there as well. But they come out, they, they can still make that left, right?
As, as the church does also.
So is that the location of the ingress, egress of this facility? Will that create any conflicts if somebody's coming out of the beer distributor trying to make that left and they're trying to make a right? Is that, did you look at that?
We didn't identify it as an impact.
Okay, maybe it's far enough separation, so.
Okay.
The other important point is just the reduction in the number of units reduces the trip generation by seventeen percent from what it was proposed originally.
Well, and that goes back to my question of how many, what does a nursing home need? And that reduces that number as well because you've got people that basically can walk to work. And, you know, that's really, really makes a difference, so. But, and I'll go back to the county, you know, you've got, you've got a county that's spending millions of dollars on putting in sidewalks and planning this kind of stuff, these kinds of things. Not just your project, but a lot of businesses along the highway that are, you know, impact our traffic issue. It's an opportunity for, you know, to make, make some kind of impact on the county to understand that it's not so much about sidewalks, but it's also about, more about traffic, it leaves a lot of you. And I don't feel it's been as well addressed as, as it potentially could be and this is an opportunity to do that.
Janice, you've reviewed what we've gotten so far, right? Do you feel that the questions were thoroughly answered, at least enough to say the document is complete? And therefore, you know, the board could then make a finding statement based on that. Obviously not this board, but the future board. Where are you in terms of your review?
I looked at it, Teresa, my office looked at it and I asked her to look at all of the comments that people had submitted to the clerk's office after the fact and make sure this was responsive to that. And the last remaining items were the items they brought up today about the sanitary system, which is talked about in here. But the letters from the county are new. So that was not part of.
So my, I guess then my question then becomes, all right, we're, we're the ones who did this goal, right?
Yeah.
We're, we're the ones who said, these are the questions to be answered, this board. And we said, what was deficient? And now we have to make a determination whether they're sufficiently answered enough to create the finding statement. But the ultimate approval of the project will be by a different board. Well, it'll still be the town board, but it'll have three different members. And what if they felt that the questions weren't sufficiently answered? So that's sort of my dilemma. We could potentially say, yes, this is sufficient to do a finding statement. That finding statement wouldn't come until next year. We don't, we're going to study the issue of whether there's a clock that begins at that point. But the ultimate zoning decision and the findings decision isn't going to be by us.
That's right.
No matter what. The only decision that possibly could be by us is that you've sufficiently answered the questions.
Right.
Whether we like the answers or not, whether they've been answered.
Correct. And so, you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, people like to say, you know, this is the last, the final hour or whatever, but I mean, we have to be responsive to the things that are coming into our office and we've been reviewing it. Yeah, so it's here and we just want some direction as far as what do you want to do? Take a look at it, you know, want to distribute it? We'll put the revised version online, so, you know.
Well, I definitely.
I just need some direction as far as how it's going to go.
I'd like to see the document too from the rehab center.
Right.
Giving you permission because I think that's critical. That's been a big question. Where's the sewage going? And I know there.
So do you have the draft agreement that we sent to you?
Um, not, it's not.
It was in air, actually, I believe. How, how was that sent?
It was a letter of intent or a draft that was, he was talking about.
Yeah, but it's not signed by them.
It's not.
That's not.
Like I said, either today or tomorrow, we expect to have.
We really want to have it, yeah, like signed.
So, you know, this board decided to consider this project and we certainly had hoped that there would be some connection that would get the traffic, not like a secondary outlet. But you did reduce the project. You dropped down ten units.
And you also cut off the access to Seasons Road.
Yeah, there's no access to Hill Street, there's no access to Seasons.
Yeah.
You know, nobody's going to argue that workforce housing isn't needed. We live this every day, every day as we try to recruit people to work for the town or people we know are leaving, you know, because they just can't afford to live here. I have too many sad stories about people who, you know, maybe they're going through a divorce and somebody has to move out and they can't move out. And so you end up with two people have to figure out what to do. They have to sell a home now because it's, I, I hear these stories literally every day of, you know, an individual struggling, saying, Jay, I, I, can you find me a place to rent for under three thousand dollars a month? An individual who can't find any place to live, you know, who's critical. So, you know, it's, we, we know that this is a crisis.
Yeah.
An absolute crisis. And this is a drop in the bucket project. This is a drop in the bucket.
You're also giving us two working days to go through that document if this is to be voted on on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just saying, it's two working days to go through that document.
Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, Thursday.
Thursday.
Can I ask you a question about the agreement with the sewage treatment?
This is all, yeah, but I'm going through all of it. I'm not going through just that. I'm going through all of it.
Yes.
This is already the DEIS, it's restated. You've already been through this.
We've, we've had that for a while.
This is the new part.
Need to make comparison for that first point to, to that. So I don't, I don't see a whole lot of time necessary if you're personally.
So Councilman Martell's question was, is it a lifetime agreement with the sewage treatment?
Sewer agency agreement, well, the private agreement would be, all right? Because that can be structured any way that the two parties want. Sewer agency agreements are only for twenty-one years and they go back for renewal after the twenty-first year. After the, excuse me, by December thirty-first of that twenty-first year.
And if the nursing home shuts down for any reason?
They're still going to be able to sustain it because the sewage treatment plant itself is going to have an operator and would remain on-site. And that, that'll also be addressed in the agreements if, if one party or a sale would, would occur that that second party would assume the agreement from whoever is selling the nursing home.
And Tom, doesn't the county have the right to come in and take over the sewage treatment plan if something happens? Kind of getting it.
Yeah, the county as part of their sewer agency agreement does, you know, it's an offer of dedication. It's the phraseology that's used in the agency agreement.
Okay.
And there's a maintenance, there's a maintenance component to that over that twenty-one years as well. That's got to be absorbed, those, you know, those costs certainly go, and a change in technology. I don't know how old this system is, but, you know, you, you well know what's coming. It's really kind of fantastic technology. So as soon as it becomes viable and affordable, I think, you know, this, the timing is good. So I don't see that too much, Rick, as a, as a problem over the long term. But ownership, that's a different thing. I can't really point.
But the agreement itself makes the nursing home rehab property more viable economically. You're paying something. I don't know what the negotiated deal is, but they have a new revenue source.
And it sounds like they have capacity on their system as well, even with, you know.
They do, they do. And as Tom said, it will function better with the additional capacity. And since we'll have the housing there, we'll have the support of the state if something needed to be done to that plant.
Willst in the audience not disturb the town board? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So what I was saying was, you know, we'll, we'll be providing housing with a large state capital grant. And if something needed to be done to that sewage treatment plant to keep it viable, we would be able to secure the financing to do that.
Okay. Janice, do you know if the nursing home has any room to expand?
Um, that's in the village, right? Like we don't, that's a separate, so.
Part of it's in the village.
Part of the village, I'm not aware of.
The line goes through.
Does that, that brings up an interesting question. Does the village have to sign off on the sewer connection?
Not to our knowledge.
I don't, I don't think so.
It's a health department, private.
Suffolk County Health Department and Suffolk County Department of Public Works as, as the technical arm of Suffolk County Sewer Agency.
Okay. Cindy, you have any questions?
Uh, what happened with the request that the six thousand square foot building be decreased in size to three thousand twenty?
I think it was, it landed, they, they proposed a forty-five hundred square feet, forty-five. That was a little more than what we had said, but less than forty-two thirty-eight.
So it was reduced, that's the community center?
They did reduce it, yeah. The, the concern was like, well, you know, this is like offices and maybe it's more of a commercial use, this is, you know, you're rezoning it multi-family, it, it doesn't make sense. And the response was, you know, this is consistent with.
Yeah, I mean, you've seen our facilities. There's a computer room that people can use. There's a fitness center. And, and we consider those pretty essential parts of a project, so.
You know, that's sort of typical on a residential.
Well, not on any of the ones that we have.
We've typically limited the size to be, you know, smaller, so this does reduce it not as much as we would like. I mean, they have the, they did reduce a whole building of ten units, so, you know, that, that's up to you to decide if you're having.
So that center building, is it four thousand two hundred?
It's sort of like when you see there on the driveway, the clubhouse building is, was reduced from six thousand to around forty-three hundred square feet. And, but one of the residential buildings, the entire building has been eliminated.
And, you know, it's a, these are communities. And, you know, it's a, these are communities, particularly with the veterans, and we like to get people together, have food, and, you know, and these are people who live there. Not people coming from outside.
Is there a manager's apartment in the mix or no?
There's a super's apartment.
There is, is that one of the fifty, is that fifty plus that?
It's one of the fifty, or, no, wait, it's not.
No.
It's fifty.
It's one of the fifty.
It's one of the fifty, okay.
One of the, really forty-nine, yeah.
Forty-nine, plus, plus the super unit.
And those are in the, that, that would be in one of the residential buildings?
Yes.
Rather than the, okay, the common area of the.
And so there's around the clock presence?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of the, the neighborhoods around it, is there, so to the south and to the west? There's screening, is there fencing, is there, what is?
I got a lot of chickens to that, but I think it's also.
Yeah, the site plan incorporates meeting zoning setbacks, it does incorporate landscaping, there's a hundred and twenty-five trees being placed on the site, retains vegetation where possible. And there is setback in screen between the several areas.
Now, somebody, somebody had raised the concern that later on, that might be a connection to those neighborhood growth. But the layout doesn't allow for that, I was looking at the layout.
There's a layout.
I don't think that's possible even in the future then to.
This is kind of thirty-nine.
So when the buildings are placed, you can't really yet.
So you can see the existing limit of clearing that retains natural vegetation, the buildings are set back even more than the zoning setback in terms of the residential buildings. And there will be vegetation and screening.
This is what I was saying, this is Hillcrest Terrace, and that sees, there's just no, no way to connect to those.
No, that's foreclosed based on the site plan.
Exactly.
But there is good buffering setbacks.
You'd have to rip out buildings to make that happen.
Which is one of the first things we said when we, when we saw this, because the neighbors were, they did not want this to be opened up, and we didn't. That plan does not allow that, nor does it allow it easily in the future. So what are we deciding, whether or not to deem this complete, or, I mean.
Yes, we are going to give out these books.
Or, or do we put it over to another board who will have to really kind of get a number of work sessions?
Right, well, I guess first we'd have to, we gotta review it just to know that, you know, even if we were going to deem it complete, we can't do it right now. Obviously, we have to review it and make that determination whether it's complete.
And you need some product we've asked for.
Even if we can deem it complete, do we wanna deem it complete? And, I'm, I'm sorry, so who's talking?
I don't know.
It's, it's very distracting. Even if we would want to deem it complete, then we still have to make that decision whether we really should let the next board. Because we're saying we have enough information, they've answered all our questions, to issue a finding statement. Whether the next board might say, well, some of, we don't feel that, you've answered the questions fully. You know, that's like, it's a big question. Though I feel like we're the ones who did the scoping, we're the ones who required the EIS. We're the ones who said what's insufficient, you know, maybe we should be the board that says whether you've fully answered our questions. But then we're still, either way, the ultimate findings are gonna be done by another board, and the ultimate zoning is gonna be done by another board. So that's, I think is a big question for us.
Well, once, once again, I would plead that, you know, there's a lot of talk about the secret process and how long it takes to get affordable housing done.
Yeah.
And I think we all need to pitch in together and just try to make the process as efficient as possible. This board has an opportunity to move this project just one more step, and then, you know, we'll do what we have to do.
Well, I think for the likelihood, I mean, to be honest, you know, let's say we deem it complete. Somebody may file an Article seventy-eight saying, you didn't have enough information, some of the questions weren't answered, then you get stuck now in litigation. I mean, that is a.
It's a possibility, and, you know, the, the sooner that happens, the better.
I think, I think it's important.
If we, if we delay it, and then it, then that happens six months from now, if it's deemed complete and there's a lawsuit, the state will be behind us in defending it.
Yeah.
The issue I have is if this board deems it complete. If this board deems it complete, all of the work that the next board will have to do, would have to do to deem it complete, they'll still have to do in order to, to put out the finding statement and make an ultimate decision. They're still gonna have to look at this document and say, does it meet all the requirements? Am I satisfied that all the, this, I mean, I would rather go through the whole process from start to finish as one unit than have one board start and, and tell me that something was complete, and then have me pick up the ball and still have to go back and, and review all of this and say whether I feel it's complete, and whether I am comfortable or, or how I would like the findings to read. They're still gonna have to do all that work, and especially if, if we can find out if it does start a clock. If it does start a clock, then by, by no means am I comfortable starting that clock for the next board to come up to speed.
And, you know, there's an inherent flaw in, in, you know, kind of the philosophy that you state there, because something that we discussed in another public hearing, we have term limits. So I, I believe that we have to go on to the, the premise that a new board is, is watching these meetings, and I know that they are, at least, you know, the members that I know, that they are abreast of this situation. And, you know, to, I know it's certainly a consideration with, you know, three new members, but a new board, you know, they're still the town board of the, of the board of the town of Southampton. And, you know, they will do the job. And, so, I mean, to keep this thing going, or not just to keep, I mean, but to, to do what we know, you know, either an up or down vote for these applicants, I think, you know, is important for us to seriously consider.
There's a process in place, right, we all know the process. We've complied with the process, it's been reviewed, there's nothing before us that's telling us that we need to provide anything else. This thing has been vetted, we've provided the information, and every day that passes, we jeopardize where we are in the future with our funding. So, yes, if we, if we can get this to move on to the next step, I, I, regardless of who the boards are, there, there's a process, and we've completed that process. And I think you've heard that today. And once we hand you the, the LOI that's signed, and we've provided the county and information about their approvals, I think we're in a position that it's gotta get approved now. Because we don't, we don't have the luxury of that.
This board doesn't have the ability to approve the project. All, all this board would have is the ability to deem this document.
Yeah, I, I understand, I'm not making that statement. I'm saying that we have, we're in this process of getting the F EIS moved on, it's on for next week. And, and getting someone to say that it's approved to the point.
Sorry, no, it's not on for next week.
Well, we're talking about whether you want it on if you have.
And with all due respect, this board will decide whether or not it's complete.
Yeah.
And then, that's, that's.
That's correct.
It's not a full-on conclusion.
You articulated that before.
Well, that was my full expectation. I understand that, but I also need to know sort of where the board is. I can't even tell you I'm ready to deem it complete, because I need to read that.
We didn't wanna put a resolution on and everybody go, what are you talking about? Where has this been all this time, and now you're putting us off? So we wanted to have the opportunity to be here with this board to talk about it instead of.
And I, I'm looking at what I need to read, I don't think I, it takes me that long, I don't, I don't see a huge process in front of me. It's relative to new board members, you know, I, I totally agree with, agree with Councilman Scio Boni, is that they come up to speed on their own. I know when I first got in here, I was handed a bunch of stuff, and told, sign here, sign there, and I said, no. And that's their prerogative to do, so.
You know, I also want to make it, and I said this before, let's say we do deem it complete, that is not approving the process, the project. It, it's just simply saying you've answered the questions. I have somebody in the back who keeps waving, just say no. That's not gonna be, this board's not gonna say yes or no. This, all this board can do is say whether you've sufficiently answered the question enough to make a decision. That's all, that's what's in front of us, not a yes or no. Either the document's complete, you've answered the questions, or the document's incomplete, you, these are the questions you need to answer. And that's something I think we don't know yet, and, you know, the board's gonna have to look at that and then decide whether you've sufficiently answered the questions to enable us to make a decision. And then that decision won't be the exact same players. It's gonna, there's two, two of the town board, but three, three will be different. So there's a complexity there, and, you know, I hope you can appreciate that.
I do.
So let's put it on, and if board members feel like they didn't have enough time to read it and evaluate it, we can table it until the, for the next board.
Why don't we review it before we decide to put it on anything?
Well, it gives you the, gives you the motivation to review it. Because if you don't put it on by Tuesday, you'll say, I don't wanna put it on because I didn't read it.
But it does give you. Feeling it's already foregone, done and things, so I guess we'll put it on.
Well, and we did read it, you know, the planning department read it, and we feel, you know, on your behalf.
No, the next.
But of course, you're the voter.
Only one meeting, right, just the twenty-first.
We have one more meeting.
Which is next Thursday.
Right.
You're giving yourself seven days to end a four, not end, but to move along a four-year process.
So if we were to put it on.
Well, we've been working on this longer than that.
Okay. It's substantially different than what's been online all this time, except that we said, look, you have the sewage treatment issue. You have a lot of comments that were handed in, even though they're not officially part of the record, make sure these are looked at. And there's some response to them, so it's not like all these people who filed all these comments, they're not formally in here. But we did say, make sure all of these, this, after the fact, information was looked at and it's covered.
And, and that's something I would consider in my review, but I would still.
But technically, they didn't have to do that. Technically, only what's on the record is what gets responded to. This is after the record stuff, but still, there's a lot of concerns, and that's understandable.
My weekend's pretty clear.
You know.
Yeah, mine as well, I have kids coming home for the holidays and.
Review it over the weekend, too, but then we have to make a decision.
On Tuesday?
Well, when do we approve it?
When you put it on the draft agenda, review is Tuesday, when you decide by Thursday, so you put it on.
Right, Thursday's the meeting.
Well, I mean, to, to Councilman's point, if we can put it on and then table it if we, if we don't have sufficient votes to go forward with it, or feelings to go forward with it. It really depends on diligence of each individual council person.
Yeah, I'm here at your direction, so just tell me how you wanna do it, and we'll do it.
It only takes one to put something on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Sure.
Sounds like you.
Good, so, that sounds good, and, um, sorry to bring this in, but, you know, we're just trying to respond to all of these things that are coming in a flurry. Um, not just because you're leaving office, but because it, it is, you know, people's projects and funding are on the line, so.
Well, we've worked on this for a long time. Yeah, no, I'm just saying the time sensitivity. So, and, you know, I, I certainly will need to see a document from the rehab center. So that I know when I'm doing my analysis that that's a real possibility, not an imagined possibility. Okay? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this, is this electronic, can you send it to me?
I can send it to you electronically.
Yeah.
I, we just did that for the benefit of the new board, so they could click and go exactly to the spot and watch the hearings.
They're watching our meetings, they're going back.
So Janice, are the additional comments in there, in there?
No, because they're after the record was closed, but they came in through the clerk's office, even though the record was closed, like by email and stuff.
Is there anything in there we should be reading in addition, or do we have access to that?
You've already, you got all these from Kevin O'Ton, and these all came to you, but I was censored on.
Yeah, we've had all of that, just making sure that we're. Response to the question.
Alright, so we are gonna change topics. And, Janice, you are going to lead a conversation about Councilman Scio Boni's proposal legislation to restrict the operation of commercial vessels in residential zones?
Yes.
Marines.
No, residential, marinas and residential zones.
Who's underlying zoning is residential.
Thank you.
So.
Okay.
Well, there just seemed to be a lot of confusion and consternation about what the point of the legislation was, and I don't know if you'd like to.
Some folks have put out on, on social media that the town of Southampton is prohibiting commercial vessels or charter vessels in the town. And what we are doing is looking to, at these marinas that have underlying zoning of, that are residential, to prohibit public vessels and, and charter boats. Now, we've talked, I've, I've received a number of calls from a variety of different people in marinas, most understand what we are doing. You know, some have some concerns, and there's certainly, in my, my opinion, some more work to do on this. So, but i- if you would go through the different marinas that we're, we're talking about, and then the marina zones, which is also another issue that.
So I gave everyone this map, and it's also on the wall. And to be clear, the marinas that are in R W B, which is a business zone, are not, nobody is saying charter boats aren't allowed. The bread and butter of, you know, R W B businesses, not talking about that whatsoever. And I think one of the issues in the code is that we actually provide a definition and an X in residential, but don't provide the P in R W B. And that can be very confusing, so I think that's important, that you delineate that as an amendment. That in the commercial code, you add that same operation of a commercial vessel, and it's P across the board, so it's not being restricted. Because it could look like, look, there's X's everywhere, but these are residential zones. Um, so, but in R W B, P, it's already presumed P, it's, you know, typically part of a marina. So that could be part of that confusion.
I'd like to interject here, with the residentially zoned marinas, these are parcels that have been cut out of a subdivision historically to allow for a marina that serves the neighboring community, you know, historically. And so what we are concerned about is the increased activity, in intensive activity in and around the marinas. So, you know, we're looking to do some things to, to delineate and to clarify our code in that, that regard.
Right, and you might recall Mike and I coming here a while back, talking about residential M one, like marina zone, because there was this concern that you're a marina in a residential zone, and how do they expand, or, you know, do other things? And we talked about this, but there was, there was a, you know, some concern specifically in North Sea, that they didn't really want, you know, potentially a new marina to be able to be put in place, which is confusing to me personally, because your whole policy document, the town's document, documented policies want marinas and want vessels to, you know, inappropriate places.
Coastal community.
Coastal community, so, so when I read some of these comments about, you know, how could you prohibit charter boats, you know, that's not really what we're talking about. We are talking about very, very large, you know, yacht type of boats in very, very small areas. And that, I, you know, that's really, how do you regulate that?
Is that what the law's proposing, the limit, the size of boats?
It really, that's the nuisance concern, it's twofold, from what I was understanding.
I thought it was about the commercial uses, not the.
It is, and I think that the, the issue, and I, and I, I respect what Councilman Scio, it's why I co-sponsored the public hearing, because I wanted to hear from the public on this. I think, though, where we're getting into an issue with this is it says, "Commercial or public vessel, any mechanically propelled vessel of any size." And then it also says, "Operation of commercial or public vessel, except lawfully existing personal fishing boats." There's an issue here, because when you say, "Any vessel of any size for which direct or indirect compensation is received," there are a lot of personally owned vessels with people that own them, that have taken the time and expended the money to get their Coast Guard six-pack license. So they can take out a group, you know, a couple for a sunset cruise, or a group of four guys for a bachelor party. And that's really how they pay to have their own boat, and pay their slip fees, and, you know, dock fees have gotten really expensive. So it's how they, and they've been doing this forever. I mean, this has been going on in these residential marinas for a long time. It hasn't impacted the use, what we're seeing, the impact is, is with these large vessels and large parties coming to these marinas. And everyone that I've spoken to in these marinas, either, either a charter captain or a marina owner, has said, no, we, we understand what you're talking about, and that stuff doesn't belong here. The question is, how do we legislate just that?
Right, and this definition comes from the state. This, um, any mechanically propelled vessel of any size, this is what the state definition is, because they require them these licenses, et cetera, when you are for hire. So that, you know, we just took that definition straight out of the state. So that, you know, we just took that definition straight out of the state in New York.
So I, I was here when we did the legislation, I think it was John's legislation, that made these marinas and residential areas conform, the pre-existing ones.
Which is what you were told to do here.
Which is what we have.
Because I think that, you know, we recognize that most of them predated zoning. We made, you know, we zoned the areas residential and now you have homeowner, homeowners that maybe don't like the smell of fish in the morning or whatever it might be. And we wanted these places to be able to survive and not be treated like we want them to go away, like.
Or placed by high density condos, which was what the direction it was heading.
Private estates, because that's, you know, has happened to a lot of places where the, one guy buys the whole marina, has a private house, you know? You lose the boat slips and you lose places for commercial fishermen.
We wanted to keep it down.
Yeah, you know, it, but marinas definitely are not all alike. You know, I'm very familiar with marinas, even though I don't have a boat. But, you know, you have some that have a lot of commercial fishermen, you have some that have just a lot of small boats that, you know, residents, sometimes if it's in a neighborhood, it's mostly the people in the neighborhood who have, have boats there. Um, and then you have marinas that are heavily commercial, that have, you know, charter boats coming and going, uh, party boats coming and going.
And those are usually in commercial zones and that's permitted, so.
In R W B, right.
These aren't all the same, even though they might be residential in terms of, are we grandfather? When we said, "You're pre-existing," and I guess the, the issue I'm trying to get at is if, let's say they had boat rentals going on there and now we're saying you can't, I don't know if we're saying you can't rent a boat only of a certain, but we're saying a certain size, I get concerned that, like, let's say you have a restaurant in a residential zone and it's pre-existing, non-conforming, has a C O, it's really not a problem, but suddenly there's a new tenant and the restaurant becomes super popular. And suddenly there's lots of people coming, it's staying open later at night, the bar is busy and the neighborhood isn't happy with it. You know, we don't want to go start changing the code to say, no, you can no longer do that anymore, just because now you're popular. Are they doing, I guess what I'm getting at is, are some of these places doing what they've always done, but they're just more popular?
No.
And, and now it's.
I think it's a new business model to rent boats and have captains and other, you know, like, it's just a new business model. It's not just a marina for, you know, the typical homeowner or someone who has a boat.
So it's sort of a new use they're introducing?
It's a bit of a new concept because it's allowing people to buy these boats, hire captains, attract people to their property and they can all get on the boat and go out, you know, and, and we don't necessarily, that's great, I, you know, I do that.
Can I ask you something?
But, um, sure, I, I just want to make the point is, but some of these boats now are causing in-water conflicts because of their sheer size. So people who are paddle boarding or doing things in little areas are like, what's going on with this huge boat here now?
Put the water in the.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
How big of a boat you could have?
And some, some places are inaccessible because of bridges and other things, so they can't put bigger boats.
Have you worked with anybody from the town attorney's office yet on this, because I don't, before I comment?
Uh, I gave you the definition and I think we talked to Jim about it initially.
Okay, because I'm just looking at it from the perspective of even enforcement, which is ultimately going to come down to. And I don't, there's really, this is kind of ambiguous in the way it's written and I know you don't want to tie it perhaps to size or maybe you do, I don't know. Either size or maybe number of people, because I'm hearing you say, you do want to allow the guy who's just bringing out a couple for a sunset cruise, so you don't necessarily want to capture them, no pun intended, in this on their fishing boat. So you might want to have a number of people which might just practically make it that it's going to be a smaller boat. It's not going to be a bigger boat, because we're not going to spend the money on gas to take that.
We are looking at that as also.
So that's all up to you all, however you want to regulate, and I think to Councilwoman McAdmire's point, how do you want to address the, there, is the issue just a perceived issue and it's not really an issue? Or is there an actual issue here and you're trying to eliminate a nuisance or an in-water conflict?
And Janice, one of the, one of the issues that kind of is being addressed here and, and is that we have two choices. We have these residential marinas and then we have R W B, which is a very intensive use. So to go from residential to R W B is, it's a bit of a stretch. And I believe that we do need another classification of marina, uh, similar to the one that you brought forward. And, um, that's something that I want to take a serious look at in, in the next term.
Great, well, happy to bring it back, because this plan actually tells you to do that.
Yeah, and that does it all, frankly, but.
And, you know, because some of these marinas are, well, bigger than others and, you know, there's, uh, there's different access to the water, there's neighborhood considerations. And, uh, some marinas would, I believe, um, uh, be candidates to go into another, uh, another category of zoning rather than R W B, which you can have a restaurant, you can have housing, you can have all kinds of activity in R W B. And we don't want that everywhere, but we certainly want the marinas to survive and we want people to be doing this.
Which is where the question was. I think that there's a lot of like, oh my God, what are you doing? And the, the thing is, we just need to pinpoint and drill down on what are you trying to accomplish and how can you enforce it?
Right, and conversely, you know, some of this emerged from, uh, marinas and residential areas that, that local residents didn't want to see expansion, uh, or growth of that marina. It was restricted under, that's what their concern was. And a lot of times it's, it's not understood that it's already protected in, in that respect. But the, that concern came out. So when we first talked about this, we had a lot of marine, marina owners here, you know, talking to us, so.
I think the marina owners would embrace the idea and we can go back and I think we should, obviously, bring them in and understand, you know, the needs of this industry. And really look at, we did do a lot of work with this, like, where could you just simply, this makes sense to be R W B, just make him R W B, you know, and then, then they're commercial and you don't have an issue.
But there's also, there's also a tax implication to that. Aren't R W Bs taxed higher than a residential marina?
But if you are like truly a commercial use, um, then maybe you should be in a commercial zone. And if it's appropriate size-wise, you could be.
And location-wise, R W B doesn't make sense in some cases.
In some cases, right.
Right, and then that M one, M two, we were looking at.
There's also lot size consideration.
Allows lots of other things other than marinas, so.
So that's why we came with that whole effort initially, was because it was to say, it's like marina light. Or like, you're allowed in a marina, but you're not allowed all these other ancillary uses that would also be.
Okay, so.
It's a wide net.
We are going to have our public hearing on the twenty first, uh, we're going to get charter boat owners. I, I plan on closing it, I don't know.
I'm fine with that, I think it needs more work.
Right, closing it, we're not putting it on for, um, we're not putting a resolution on to vote on or anything like that. And we're going to pick it up in the springtime.
Great, and then at that point, if, if whatever you're doing, we should put, um, if you're not allowing it in residential, it should be clear that you are allowing it in commercial, so that would just recommend.
No, and I'm happy to hear that actually, because, like, I, I, I think I understand the problem you're trying to address, you know.
You just have to find a more pinpointed way to do it.
In terms of disturbances to the residential properties around these marinas by this intensification of use. But whatever tool, it has to sort of be surgical, that it doesn't have unintended consequences that are prohibiting things you weren't trying to prohibit, which could end up putting these marinas out of business.
Yeah, that's never been, I don't think that's the councilman or, uh, councilwoman's intention whatsoever. The idea here was to, um, make sure that we're not attracting a nuisance to a residential area because there's a new business model to like rent out these very massive boats. And now, um, there's a lot of concern.
And anyone on the water sees that, it's summer, there were a lot of them.
There's a few marinas that are, you know, potentially for sale and people are coming in, talking about, what can I do here? And, uh.
And we want them to stay marinas and stay.
We want them to stay marinas.
Yeah, we also don't want them to add in, you know, restaurants and massage parlors and.
Well, if they're R W B, they may want to do.
I never found one with a massage parlor.
All right, well, Janice, thank you.
The main purpose is that we want the marine industry to survive and we want to encourage water enhanced and water dependent use as always.
I don't want to hurt the little guys, you know.
Thank you for your work on this and, uh, like I said, we're going to have our public hearing and we're certainly here from the maritime industry then and I welcome their comments.
Great.
But that, that was, uh, my intention is to, uh, is to close the public hearing and not put a resolution on and then, uh, pick it back up. I said the spring, probably late winter, you know, in that time period.
So you don't want to turn the hearing to some date next year?
No, no, because we're going to change some.
Probably re-notice it to.
That, that would be a better way to go.
A better definition and more clear guidance.
Yeah, so, uh, some of the, the marine industry is likely to come to this and I think it's important that they know, even though you're, you know, we're, we have to entertain comment, but that the intention is to close it, not to have a resolution and not to have a resolution that appears next week or, but to actually rewrite the bill and have a new public hearing.
Yes.
Because that may limit the comments, I think we have a lot of comments on the twenty first already. Um, you know, particularly if there's legis, if there's a resolution on to deem the F E I S complete. So we're going to get lots of people here and, uh, yeah, it, it might help us get through the day if they understand that there'll be a new draft. We're going to work with the industry and there'll be new legislation.
Well, as long as you, you know, take breaks on a regular basis, that would be really useful.
It's going to be a fun last, fun last.
Just to the end, bitter end.
What else can we throw on there?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you. Nice technique.
Do you have any updates?
No.
Actually, I do.
Oh.
I'm going to take my mask off for this, so I can read.
I have one thing, but you go ahead.
Um, we were, you know, we've been talking about climate action plans and all sorts of things. We just recently, well, not recently, but Tom Houghton, our town engineer, has been working diligently with the Department of Energy and we've been recognized by the Department of Energy for our work. And there's a letter I'll circulate to you guys. But I wanted to add to that, that, uh, you know, they, they actually keep these numbers and we trade the numbers and all what we're doing, but we, right now, the town of Southampton has reduced its greenhouse gas emissions by more than two hundred and ten metric tons of CO2 per year um, at this one hundred year old town hall building, uh, after completing a multi-year project to retrofit uh, steam heating, lighting and everything that we've done. So the investment we've made in this, in this old building, uh, sort of paid off. But I did want to thank Tom, uh, Houghton for all his work on this and Christine Fenton, if she's listening at some point, who really put this in motion. Um, it's, it's a really great honor for this town to be recognized by the Department of Energy and, um, this to me is the way we open up the door for the money that we need to do it with. To be recognized this way by a federal agency, uh, is important. So I just wanted to thank Tom, uh, for all his work and Christine, wherever you are, for all your work. And, uh, it's a really great honor and we should be proud of the town that, uh, that we've achieved that. And, and Peter, uh, as well, for all the work you guys did in town hall, that was a big part of it. But all our installations and facilities, we've had a reduction of huge amount of, of CO2 as a result.
That's great.
So I'll put my mask back.
Yesterday, we did a, uh, a groundbreaking. Rick was there with me, uh, for the Mill Creek Park, formerly the Burden property. It was cold, it was, you know, it's weird to, you know, you're there with the shovels, but there's really like, there's no, you know, we're, we're not building anything, it's really, it's nature that we're celebrating. Though there is going to be a shade pavilion and a comfort station as part of the plan and the.
Well, you need a hole for that.
And the removal of the road, so it's sort of like deconstruction, uh, taking the road out and connecting the Settlers Field Park to the Mill Creek Park and making one larger park, hopefully burying the power lines or rerouting the power lines, so, uh. But it was, it was nice, we had a bunch of the water mill community there, right? We had Steve Abramson there, Tim Marin, Rachel Verno, uh, and others, uh, and, uh, Jackie Fennellin came and, uh, Dan McCormick from C P F. John Halsey was there, Assemblyman Thiel was there. Kristen Dulos, our projects director, was there. Uh, Chris LaGuardia, who's doing the design for it, was there and, uh, you know, you, you really can sense when you're there how great a park it will be. The vista, the waterfront is just gorgeous. So, you know, it will unfold, I guess, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take to do the construction. We haven't gone out the bit yet.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I, I do look forward to that, uh, getting complete and, you know, that really is, you know, the road vista will be gorgeous just as you drive past as well. But you're, you're creating a, uh, a very walkable park for downtown, you know, the Hamlet Center of Watermill there that, you know, and there's lots to do from seeing the windmill to the, uh, the water mill there. To be able to walk to this facility, there, there's other, uh, attractions as well in that area, so.
Yeah, it well includes Settlers Field there, so you will have quite a trail to walk around. There will be fishing pier, kayak launches, there'll be plenty to do. I think it's going to be a lot more popular than they expect and, uh, you really can't understand the beauty of the location till you actually walk to the center of that property and look around, it's a great spot.
You know, the, the two of the family members were there too, I forgot to mention that. The Burton family members and they were really pleased too that it would be a place that they could still go and visit. Though they, they sold the property, but, uh, the fact that it's for a public park, they have a lot of sentimental feelings about the property. If, uh, if it had just been a private estate, they wouldn't have that ability. But the, but the whole public now can also have the experience that they've had, which is, which is really nice. It's nice when you can do a waterfront park and, you know, Fred said a few words, Assemblyman Thiel as well.
It's going to be gorgeous, it's in a great spot, Gateway to Watermill. I'm sorry I couldn't make it, I had a personal conflict.
Hope you guys invite me to the ribbon cutting, so. When it gets done, um, I can ride my bike there, it's close.
There you go.
I had the, my last meeting of the Suffolk County Supervisors Association yesterday, it was really well attended. Several of the outgoing supervisors were there, uh, including, you know, including Avet Aguilar from Riverhead and Scott Russell from Southold, uh, myself, Peter Van Scoeyck from East Hampton, uh, and the outgoing supervisor of Brookhaven, Ed Romain, who's going to be county executive, was also there.
Was Jerry there?
Uh, no, no. But, uh, it was nice to have a conversation with Ed, because, you know, he clearly, uh, you know, understands the role of being a supervisor, uh, so does, you know, Steve Balone was a supervisor too of Babylon. But he, uh, he seemed really interested in trying to solve problems and working together in the new capacity. So there were two issues I wanted to bring up, one was waste management, which is always, uh, you know, a challenge because we just don't have a regional waste management plan, so most of our waste is trucked off. We talked a little bit about moving toward rail with the hope that, you know, that would reduce some of the carbon footprint.
Been talked about a long time.
That there is some potential there, you know, emerging technologies for waste processing. Ed Romain had this idea about, you know, reducing food waste by actually providing homeowners that wanted it tumblers, where they can, you know, take their food waste and turn it into compost and they use it at their gardens.
We actually compost, take compost at our waste facilities right now.
Yeah, food waste?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Uh, the other thing, which I think is really going to be interesting, we had a presentation about healthcare and, uh, Suffolk County has, um, E M H P, they have their own health, they're a self-insured provider. It's different than what the town has. It's still Blue Cross Blue Shield, but, um, they're the administrators. But it's, um, it's always sort of been a closed, um, unit. I think Suffolk County Water Authority is on it and the P B A is on it and I think that, and Suffolk County A M E. And it's a pretty good healthcare policy, it just happens to be significantly less than what we pay for insurance. And it's very similar. We're, we're talking like ten thousand or more or less for family coverage. And they're looking to see if they can get, you know, state permission to expand that so that they can make it available for municipalities, that's something obviously we'd have to negotiate. But, you know, if we can reduce the cost of a family plan, which is, you know, now like forty thousand dollars down to, let's say, thirty thousand, those who are also paying, you know, police are paying fifteen percent of their salary, the new officers and the C S E A are paying ten percent of their salary toward health insurance or ten, uh, ten percent of the plan, not necessarily ten percent of their salary, but ten percent of the plan. If the plan cost goes down, then there's more money in their pocket, so it's. So, it's an issue that could be worth exploring in the future. It could be significant savings to the town, millions potentially in savings to the town, you know, without losing any of the benefits. So, it's worth, it's worth looking at. All right, in terms of, that's sort of all I have.
Not today, no.
Cindy?
Nope.
Tommy, Johnny?
Yeah, last Saturday, we had a Habitat Restoration Volunteer Event on Long Beach. We were planting beach grass. We got 40 participants out there. And we planted a whole bunch of the beach and up near the parking lot. We're trying to hold the sand on the beach rather than, if you know Long Beach area, sand blows on the parking lot or the road. Once it gets on there, we can't put it back, we can't put the sand back on the beach. So, so we're planting beach grass, Bartina patens and...
To stabilize the...
Well, to stabilize the beach itself, there's washouts there and making pathways. So, the idea is to have, you know, like natural scape, you know, beach scape and holding sands. Cornell Cooperative Extension was there.
We work with Cornell out here too. They're great, they're really great.
Right. And so, they bring the sproutlings and the NOAC Civic Council too.
Sproutling?
Sproutlings, yeah.
And they do eelgrass as well, so we have people diving.
Does anyone not know what I'm talking about?
I've never heard that.
The expression sproutling?
Yeah.
Or earthling?
Little sprout?
Could be from The Hobbit. The grass sprouts and you put them in and...
Plugs.
Don't call me sprout.
I call them plugs.
You can call them.
Well, I'm proud of the volunteers that came out and worked and we did a good job. We got a nice day to do it.
I saw it on Facebook.
It's great. And Cornell's such a great, great organization for that. Up and down our Southampton coastline, they're doing all these projects with us and it's really nice.
They went, it was on Friday last week to the college, they had the windmill light. So, they didn't like do the switch. The windmill was already lit up, because, you know, the windmill's under construction. I guess they, you know, because of all the under construction stuff, they didn't bring the crowd out to the windmill, but they invited individuals to go and take a look at it. But they, out in Chancellor's Hall, they did allow some of us to, you know, wish everybody a happy holiday. Senator Palumbo was there, some of them wasn't able to attend. But it was a nice showing of community support from particularly, you know, a lot of the students that were there from different branches like SO Mass, you know, and other schools within the Stony Brook University, different disciplines. So, it was very nice. All right, so we do have some executive session stuff. We have litigation to discuss. We have acquisitions to discuss. I don't see personnel. So, maybe we don't have personnel. Does anybody know?
I didn't see it either, just CPF and something else. Here it is.
Litigation and acquisition. So, I will make a motion to end our work session, go into executive session on litigation and acquisition.
Second.
Second by Councilman PBA, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned for all other purposes.
I think this is our last work session.
Is this?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.